Six oh six, I am calling this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli. De Peña.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Notari. Ravel.
Here.
Stromola Burke.
Here.
Mayor Malham.
Here.
Sunshine.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, known as the Sunshine Law, notices of this meeting was published in the Thursday, December twenty-second, twenty twenty-two editions of the Belleville Times and the Star Ledger. The Sunshine was complied with by adopting and forwarding to the press, posting filed with the municipal clerk, the annual resolution showing the date, time, and place of each meeting, and copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the township of Belleville Town Hall Bulletin Board.
Okay, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we already had our roll call. So, next item on our agenda, I'd like to welcome you all to our second meeting of the month. We meet twice a month. The first meeting is usually a caucus meeting, although we do take some action. The second meeting is not a caucus meeting, so they tend to go a little bit faster. With that being said, today we have at least two. I'm not sure, are you doing, are you presenting? Okay. So today we have two special presentations, two proclamations. So without further ado, before I read the resolution that the governing body will pass tonight, I'm going to invite these two young men forward. I'm going to invite Mr. Anthony Lopez and Mr. Elijah. Is Elijah here? I know Anthony's here. Oh, there we are. Come on forward, boys. So as most of you know who are frequent visitors of council meeting, usually before we start the official portion of the meeting, we do some proclamations or presentations. So these two fine young men are Belleville residents. They're being honored today because they've reached a milestone in their athletic career. They've been accepted to a U-12 team. And for those of you who remember just a few months ago, we actually had another U-12 member here from Belleville who was a baseball player, these two young men are football, but who was a baseball player who actually represented America in the U-12 in either Korea or Japan and brought home the gold medal. These two fine young men have done it nationally here, and I'm going to read a proclamation. There's two different proclamations, the only thing different is your name. So I'm just going to read one and mention both of you. This will be actually voted on tonight at the council meeting, and I just want to say that we are very proud of you. Belleville's proud of our recreation and our sports facilities. In the last couple of years, this governing body has done a heck of a lot to make sure that you guys have the greatest fields to play in. I would say that our municipal stadium complex, our fields are second to none at this stage. And I know that sometimes your talent brings you outside of Belleville and outside of New Jersey, but when you're back here, we definitely want to have you two boys playing on our facilities. So without further ado, it says, "Resolved by the mayor and the municipal council of the town through a Belleville. Whereas Elijah Franklin and Anthony Lopez, Belleville residents and honor roll students have been chosen to represent North Brick City Lions at the American Youth U-12 National Championship in Florida. And whereas only twenty-eight players from across the state have been selected to represent New Jersey with Elijah and Anthony, I'm sorry, Elijah a defensive back and wide receiver and Anthony? A receiver. Because I'm only reading one, so. Defensive back and quarterback and wide receiver. Got it. Being two players selected from Belleville. And whereas during the American Youth U-12 Football Championship, North British, North City Lions brought home the trophy and the team defeated a highly ranked Island's Best Braves of California nineteen to zero to bring New Jersey their third consecutive championship crown. And whereas the mayor municipal council of the town through a Belleville find it fitting to honor both these young men of North Brick City Lions U-12 team for their display of dedication, commitment, and perseverance, and through their efforts did an outstanding job and are richly deserving of our collective congratulations. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor municipal council of town through a Belleville recognize the excellence and devotion exhibited by both these young men and North Brick City Lions U-12 Football Team for winning the American Youth National Championship in Florida. And be it further resolved that the mayor and municipal council of town should be commend both these young men and wish them continued successes in their years to come." Congratulations. They have, they have medals and rings, everybody. Can we see the medals and the rings? That's nice. And let's just take some pictures. If the family wants to come up to take some pictures, we could do that real quick.
You guys want to have a speech?
You, you guys can give a speech if you want. Couple more years.
They don't want a speech.
Come on, the boys front and center. Your resolutions up. Get your medals up and your rings out. Moms or dads, I didn't want to give a phone to Karen or somebody. There you go. So that was our two presentations today. We do have other proclamations that'll be voted on today. Just want to give a pause for maybe a minute or so in case family and friends want to, want to leave or take this opportunity to leave. You're not going to interfere with the rest of our meeting. I know the boys have other places to be. Thank you again. How about one more round of applause for both these young men? Okay, next item on our agenda is the report of the manager.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, my report is going to be centered around a conversation, a discussion that we started probably well over a year ago. And I, the, the topic obviously somewhat sensitive to some people because obviously Belleville never charged for any kind of recreation fee. Excuse my back. And what we, what we did over the last year, year and a half is the recreation department, myself, most recently our finance officer, we tried to put as much facts and figures together to try to make a, a good decision going forward. And this included talking to coaches, talking to parents, obviously our rec, our rec staff here, we have Jerry and Tom, and I'm going to ask Tom to come forward if you don't mind. And again, I think we've, we've said this in the past, not most towns, but every town has a recreation fee and Belleville doesn't. And that's something that, you know, some people say, well, we should be proud of, but it's not proud of that we're not charging. Our duties and responsibilities here is to provide a good product, provide recreation service to, to our students, to our, to our residents that they can not only be proud of, but certainly, you know, this was a prime example tonight where we had two Belleville residents leaving Belleville to go play on another team, whereas, you know, we have that same type of program here in Belleville. And, and I can assure you, they left, but if we did ask those students, is there a fee to charge to play on that team that they played? The answer would absolutely be yes. So again, because there are no fees, we came up with reasons why we think it would be a good idea for the mayor and council to consider. We're not asking you obviously to vote on anything tonight. Within the next two weeks, we are going to propose an ordinance because there's at least another meeting or two that we have to have. And if I missed anything, I certainly want Tom just to go over some of the, the bullet points of why we think the recreation fee has extreme benefits that, that offers to the, to, to the program overall.
You could pull that up a little higher. Get outside my thing. Thank you. Just want to say I always supported and respected the decision in the past, not to charge for sports. I definitely still believe it, but in the last couple of years, things have changed, and I think there are a lot of benefits to charging. And we are one of the towns, I have never come across another town in New Jersey, probably the whole country, that doesn't charge a fee for sports or any activities in town, especially to travel. Travel ball is, is now, we're trying to compete at the high school level. We're starting to, we're trying to build a feeder system that can compete with other towns, and we're starting to see signs that we are at our level. Our rec level is competing. We've won numerous soccer championships in the last few years, two baseball championships last year at different levels. Basketball, we're doing very well, competing against other towns, competitive towns. The only difference is our football program doesn't charge a penny. The football equipment is very expensive, as we know. Just conditioning football helmets every two years is like six to seven thousand dollars. We have to send every helmet out and get re-certified and with stickers on them, especially nowadays, all the injuries and the recent injury in the NFL, you know, it's very important to have that done, but it costs a lot of money. And other towns are charging anywhere from two to three hundred dollars just for football alone. So they have a hundred and twenty or plus more, they're starting their season with thirty to forty thousand to do anything they want. They can do a lot of off-season stuff like training, hire, you know, special coaches that come in and teach the kids, and they can do so much more with that extra money. The equipment along, like in the last couple of years alone, just during COVID, since COVID, you used to get a six-dollar T-shirt, order a hundred T-shirts, you get them in three weeks with any color you want. Now you can't even get the colors you want, they're double the price, and there's like a two to three month delay in, in receiving them. So things have changed in the last couple of years. We did look into Community Pass, if there is going to be fees down the road. It's a, it's a cloud-based management system for registration scheduling, communication with the parents and, and players. It, they came in one day and gave a demonstration, very good. You can pay and everything all, register all at once online, and it makes it a lot easier. But it is close to ten thousand dollars for the first year to set it up. After that, there's a five thousand dollar fee for the year to, to maintain it. The other problem we're having, we're noticing is that the participation, we put our applications out a month and a half, two months early, earlier to get, prepare for the season, see how many teams, how many uniforms you have to order and stuff like that. So we put the applications out two months early, and it's free. But when the time comes to start and you put the teams together and the practices start, many drop out because they didn't pay anything and, you know, it's just, it's just a, a way to just sign up and we'll think about it when the time comes. But it actually hurts our coaches, it hurts our program because we try to balance out all the teams. So that makes it very difficult. If they do pay, I think there's some skin in the game and they're going to, they're going to show up more in our participation level, we could near a hundred percent. As far as training and development, like I said, we're, we're behind on that with our travel programs because there's, we're trying to get more advanced to, to compete at the high school and have a nice feeder system for Belleville High School. And, you know, when you don't charge, it really hurts our program. So that's some, some of the reasons why I think there is benefits to charging that would help our program and the community.
And just a, two quick additional points that I, I wanted to make sure that emphasis. There would never ever be a child in Belleville that would be turned away from any program for any kind of hardship. So regardless of the fee is twenty-five dollars or, or more than twenty-five dollars, if we come across a hardship, no one would ever, ever be turned away. That, that we have safeguards put in place and similar to, you know, what schools do for breakfast, lunch, things of that nature. And, you know, Tom did a great job. He just took one town and, and he took the town closest to us, he took Nutley, he took their, I, I was able to pass it out. He took their registration fees, just to show you. If we took our volume of children involved in our programs and are enrolled in our programs and you took their fees, it would exceed over a hundred thousand. We're not looking, and then within, when we come back, we're not going to be looking at fees as high as Nutley. But just, you know, a twenty-five dollar, what we would consider a shirt fee, things like that, couldn't make a big difference. And I think the, the one point that Tom hit on is it's not fair to the coaches and to the athletes that do participate, and then they show up and two or three people are not on their team because, again, there's no commitment. So, you know, it's actually, we're actually doing a disservice and it's unfair to the coaches and to the athletes that do make that commitment. So, you know, if twenty-five dollars makes that commitment a little stronger, it makes the program a lot stronger. And certainly we're open to questions and.
I do, Michael.
Yep, just.
Yeah, I think that, I think it is on. Yeah, a couple of questions. Are you looking, you don't have a fee, but are you looking at twenty-five dollars? Is that?
Twenty-five dollars would be the, the, the basic fee for your.
Is that the average fee or the only fee?
No, no, it would be.
And for football and?
No, so we're going to come back and, and we're going to show you, your basic fees are twenty-five dollars, whether you join Austin Crafts, basketball, baseball. When you go and you go to a travel team, then there's more involved in it, and then your, the fee would go up to a travel team. Football, there'll probably be an increase. I think Nutley charges for football, I think they charge a hundred and fifty. We're not going to charge a hundred and fifty. We're not going to charge twenty-five, but we're not going to charge a hundred and fifty. But, but for the majority, the majority.
We're going to set those by ordinance.
Okay. Majority is going to be set probably twenty-five dollars.
A couple of other questions too. Let's say a family had four children, would it be, I'm going to use twenty-five dollars, but would it be twenty-five per child or a family fee or?
You know, and I think that's an excellent point and, and similar to when child's, when, when families join up and there's two that go to a school or two go to a program, they could, certainly you could discount the second or the third one.
And one more, it would be for, let's say if a child is involved in three different sports.
It would be personal.
Sport, okay.
While, while I'm out there, I do ask parents, coaches, directors, just for example, Fairfield, the cheerleading mom told me that they should pay a hundred and fifty dollars for cheerleading, in-town cheerleading, plus a hundred and fifty dollars for uniforms, jackets and all that, so it's three hundred dollars. And that's not even counting any competition cheer, they do that separate. So it's very minimal what we were probably going to ask, but some of these towns are charging a lot of money. Even football, most football teams in our league, in the West Essex Junior Football League, have the parents pay for the uniform, they put the kids' names on it, which is nice, but they're paying anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred dollars just for the jersey alone on their own, so.
And, and just to know from, in my experience, you'll see some families and some children not only pay the fee at the local level in their town, but they also go for special, they go for, you know, they go to, they go to camps, they go to training. They actually want to get to that next level, they want to make it better. So they're, they're spending more and more and more on it. So I, I, I've always liked this idea, I was an advocate of it a while.
You were. We did a, we did a work session on this well over a year ago, I think, and we discussed this. And thank you, Tom, for your research and, and all the numbers you did, definitely helpful. I work in thirty towns in my private life, and I could say that they all charge. Lynn Hurst is easily a couple hundred dollars for football. I'm nowhere near saying that we should do that. But I was one of the people that used to say, well, Belleville's different, you know, we don't charge recreation. And, you know, I've evolved in, on the subject a little bit, and, you know, it gets to the point where I'd rather be proud of the equipment we hand out and the quality of, of, of coaching you get and the quality of your facilities than being able to say, well, it's free. If it's, if it's not worth it and it's free, well, then nobody really cares, nobody benefits. I have worked with Community Pass, I, I've integrated with them on a bunch of different municipalities, they are very popular, they are definitely a good, a good resource if we tend to go this route for collecting. I'm a fan of calling it an equipment fee or a shirt fee. And like I said, I'm somebody who's, you know, I've evolved in this, and twenty years ago, we discussed this, I was for it, and then I, I wasn't for it lately. And I've always yielded to, to my friend and, and our deputy mayor, Tommy Graziano, because admittedly, it's a weakness of mine. I've, I've been a child in the, in the sports, but I've never been a parent, I never had a kid in the sports, I've never had a coach or, or manage, so that's why, you know, I always rely on the, on the opinion of Tommy here, who's been through all those levels. And he's somebody that's been for it from the beginning. I'm there, I don't think that it's a burden, I think twenty-five dollars, I, you did said it, you said it correctly, there's, there's skin in the game, you know? We've had those conversations where we set five teams and two months later, kids don't show up, and now you're, you're collapsing teams and moving around because it's free when you initially register. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. Benny, you have anything else?
No, I mean, you get what you pay for, so it's nice to have a free recreation league, but if you're not getting the quality out of it, you know, it's nice to say it's free, but if you're not, you're almost giving, doing a service to the community by not, you know, having kids not show up. I think, Tom.
Just for a summer camp alone, we take over three hundred applications, we don't get close to that when the first day of camp.
Right.
It's probably half, and then it drops down as we go, but there's a lot of people take vacations, but we'll never get to three hundred and fifty people, kids that sign up, but they do it because it's free and it's two months early.
Summer camp, I, I did in my private life, I did a, a custom software for Lynn Hurst, and I believe when it's an a la carte menu of multiple weeks involved, you could be over a thousand dollars to put your kid in the Lynn Hurst summer camp. And most people who don't know parents, don't, who don't have children of that age, don't necessarily realize that Belleville provided this service for free. But again, if we could charge a few bucks and maybe take them to a museum or bring them to a, a field or, or see a, a baseball game or something like that, that's.
I won't have to buy the kids ice cream every day.
Ice cream, right. And I, I just want to, I know the manager mentioned it, I just want to reiterate it and put an exclamation point on it, cost will never be a factor for any child. There would be safeguards in place, there are civic organizations like mine, like a lot of civic-minded organizations in town that would have no problem sponsoring a kid. So that, I'm, I, it goes without saying that that should never be something that prohibits a child participating.
Yeah, we said fifteen to twenty percent of kids take, not the kids, but the families take the jersey the first day and don't come back.
Don't come back, sure.
Twenty percent, that's, you know, that's, that's a lot.
It's a free shirt?
Yeah.
I know we have council members, De Peña and Ravel on the line. Anything?
Well, yes, I just wanted to corroborate what you're saying. This is definitely something that was discussed in the past. I have experienced my children being in the rec department and the things that we offer. And I second what Tommy has said, and I don't want to be redundant, but I do second that, that I do believe there is a stronger buying when you have, when you're putting in something. However, always having provisions for families that might have more than two, three children, single parents, and I do believe that, that is the, the right way to move forward, knowing that this is not going to affect the way that we provide services, but if anything, it's going to improve how we do that. So I absolutely agree. And I do, I would like to see though what we provide for families of a few more children and what, what, what that is, what that looks like, what the process, are they applying for some type of scholarship or how, how we move forward with that.
Good, okay.
Just one comment here, and I, I kind of agree with Tommy Augusta in this case. I mean, post-COVID, everything's gotten a little crazy. So as long as we keep monitoring the hardship aspect of this, I think, you know, getting people to put skin in the game and making sure they show up is really the key. If that's what we have to do, then, you know, I think we give it like a, we do like a proof of concept, spend a year, see what happens.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Tom, I appreciate it, thank you. Anything else to your report?
That's my report for the, tonight, certainly available for questions.
Anybody have questions for the manager based on his report or anything else? I have a few. Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir.
I did not specifically look outside when I got here, but can we find out if, from the historical society, I believe, who may or may not have the Chinese New Year flag? Every year we fly that, it usually goes up automatically. I have not seen it. We fly it every year, though. So if you could track, I know you have contacts there. And then I know it's getting colder out, we might get our first snowstorm tomorrow. I know that in the past, we've talked and some of the residents have mentioned about tax bills and putting a notice in there about illegal apartments and, and all that stuff. Can we also put a notice in there to remind landlords that they have to be aware of the heat requirements for cold weather, especially now that it's getting cold out? Okay. Nothing else, so we're going to move on to the next portion of the meeting, which is the report of the mayor. So as you heard already, welcome to Chinese New Year. Yesterday was the first day of Lunar New Year, it is the year of the rabbit in the Chinese culture. I've come to learn that there are other Asian communities that also celebrate not Chinese New Year, but Lunar New Year. Some, it's the year of the cat, some it's the, so anybody who celebrates Chinese New Year, we had a big Facebook presentation Sunday online with fireworks and everything else that I tend to do annually. So if you celebrate Chinese New Year, Karen, Happy Chinese New Year. And other than that, I asked the manager about the flag. Past events, I just mentioned Chinese New Year, but past events, we also had a great Martin Luther King Day celebration, took place right here, and I'm glad it took place here, we had a lot of people. So that was probably our best attended Martin Luther King Day honoring, flag raising ceremony that we've had, was held right here last Monday. And speaking of past events, although it was today, I'm told from social media that the police department had a great meet and greet at Signature Fitness today. So I'm glad we keep doing those things. Upcoming events, this coming Friday, the Belleville Civic Association is doing a hoedown, homicide murder mystery event. Tickets are available online, just follow them on social media for that. And my office is in contact with Assemblyman Cupido's office, who has a Belleville office, represents Nutley, but next year comes back to Belleville. So he's hitting the ground running, and I believe on February, it's a Thursday, I believe on February ninth, we're going to team up to do an anchor program awareness event that'll be from two PM in the afternoon to six thirty. So I've been talking every single council meeting since probably November about the anchor program. The deadline was December thirty-first, then it was January thirty-first, now it's February twenty-eighth. So myself and Assemblyman Cupido will be putting some information out on social media and the town website about that, but again, it's February ninth at the senior center, I believe, from two to six thirty. News, like to formally welcome our, our brand new clerk, his first council meeting. Be fair to him, everybody, treat him nicely, he's doing a great job, and it's his first meeting. He had a little taste of it though at the last meeting, so it's, it's not, not new. I was also in contact today with the Rafferty family. Again, we work session this topic of maybe a year ago, or let, no, it's your anniversary, so not too long ago, we work session this topic about street namings. Traditionally, we do street namings for military, those who died in war. Danny was meant a lot. I see our rec people, we're, we're here, they left, but Danny really meant a lot to the rec department, tragic ending of his very young life far too soon. And we've talked about maybe naming the driveway at the municipal stadium complex. When you come in off note on Danny Rafferty Way, I, it was actually a suggestion of his family for, for that location. So maybe we'll do a resolution for next meeting and hoping that the council would support that, and we can maybe do that in early spring. I've also been in touch with the county, so this is again a news portion of my presentation. I did reach out to our commissioner, Commissioner Palmaras, former freeholder, now he's called commissioner, represents Belleville, always in Belleville, was here with us last Monday. He's in Belleville a lot. So I sent him an email and the county executive an email, and I said, you know, every year in the springtime or so, we get the, the wonderful Essex County concert schedule, and Joe D does a fantastic job with his concerts all over Essex County, every single county park gets at least one, if not two or three, yet Belleville's never had one. We have a little park in Branch Brook Park, which is called Belleville Park on Belleville Avenue. So I did ask our commissioner to advocate for us, to the county executive and his staff, to see if Belleville can actually get a, an Essex County summer park. And they both already responded, I believe it's in the works. I'm hoping that this year we can actually say that. And I'm also hopeful that we can get a second, a something second for Belleville with that. If you've ever been to the park on Belleville Avenue, which is Belleville Park within Branch Brook Park, it's probably one of the only county parks that's not turfed. It's one of the only county parks that probably is the most in need of some love. I've also made a special request that we can get that park added to their upgrade schedule. So we're optimistic that we might get a turf field there, but easier lift is definitely going to be, being optimistic that we're going to have an Essex County park there. I mentioned too, the anchor program is extended to the end of February, myself and, and Assemblyman Cupido have an event going on. Alternate side of street parking is still suspended until spring. And last but not least, I ask you all, check out our Belleville Public Library, we have some great upcoming events and programs going on there. That's it for me. Next topic is the approval of the minutes. Sure. Yes, we might have people that weren't, weren't there.
Okay, the first one is for the regular meeting of April twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. Motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Need a motion? Need a motion. We have a motion. We have a motion made in second. Please call the roll. Anthony?
You lost me.
Anthony?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Strombolo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
The minutes of April 26, 2022 are approved. The next one is the combined conference regular meeting of May 24, 2022.
We have a motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli, Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Strombolo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
The minutes of May 24, 2022 are approved. Next, we have the combined conference regular meeting of June 14, 2022.
We have a motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli, Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Strombolo Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
The minutes of June 14, 2022 are approved. Next, we have the regular meeting of June 28, 2022.
Need a motion?
Second.
We have a motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilperson Cosarelli, Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Strombolo Burke?
Yes. Just Burke will be good.
I gotta get used to these Italian names, Albert.
Councilmember Burke?
That's good.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
The minutes of June 28, 2022 are approved. This is a challenge.
At least we got a good laugh.
He would have gotten it by the end of the meeting, I think.
By the end, I would have gotten it.
Very well.
Next, we have the reorganization meeting of July 1st, 2022.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli, Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Abstained.
Burke?
Yes.
Melham?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
The minutes of the reorganization meeting of July 1st, 2022 are approved. Next, we have the combined conference regular meeting of July 12, 2022.
We have a motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli, Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
The minutes of July 12, 2022 are approved. And finally, we have the combined conference regular meeting of January 10th, 2023.
Need a motion?
Second.
We have a motion made in second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli, Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
The minutes of January 10, 2023 are approved.
That should get us pretty much up to date. So I'm assuming just, Albert, I know that now that we're approved, we'll send them to the website, I guess, tomorrow, whenever you can.
Yes.
Next, I'm agenda is communications. Seeing none. Moving on to ordinances. Are there still no, there's still no communications, right?
There's no communication.
Okay. Seeing none. We're on to ordinances. Ordances for introduction.
This is ordinance 04-23. This is an ordinance authorizing the township executing, execution and delivery of a corrective deed to O N R Urban Renewal Company LLC, correcting the township previous conveyance of property there to locate it within the school number one redevelopment area.
We have a motion made in second for introduction. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli, Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Ordinance 04-23 is introduced. Ordinance on the table. This is an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Financial Agreement between the Township of Belleville and the R N R Belleville Urban Renewal LLC.
Seeing none, to move it off the table, I guess it's staying. It's gonna stay.
Table it.
No, I pulled it off mine. Yeah, no, it's staying. We're taking no action on it. It's staying on the table.
Right. You're taking a vote on it?
No. No, unless somebody makes a motion to remove it, then we make a motion to move it, and then we make a motion to vote on it. So right now, just, we stand down.
Okay.
Every town does a little different, so. I ripped it off my agenda.
Public comments, Mike, public comment.
All right. The attorney has confused me here. Hold on. Not hard to do during a meeting, by the way. Get your own agenda. We need a motion to open up public commenting. We have a motion made, second open public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstains?
Nope.
Okay. We are now open for public commenting. I'm gonna ask you just to please raise your hand, come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak. Mr., yes. Yeah. Hinton, Hinton. Sorry, I thought he was gonna get it before I-
Gary Hinton, 307 Fairway Avenue. Today, they were patching a hole in front of a house on Riverdale. And there's a bunch of potholes, nice sized potholes on Riverdale, on Fairway, on Celia. And I'm wondering if they could get to them and patch all those holes. There's so many of them that I can't give you one particular address. There's a lot of them.
I'm sure.
I'm sure, but you don't have to come to a council meeting for that. You could always email the manager.
Should be an email.
Yeah.
All right. And second thing, this resolution, number, what is it, one? No, that's L.
L.
Flooding down in Main Street?
Main Street, yep.
Okay. What do you, how much are you awarding that contract for? And what are you looking to accomplish with that, that we haven't done this two or three times before?
Is that the annual one that we do, Ant? I know Tom Harris is usually here to speak on it.
I wish he was.
I'd have to give you, hang on a second. I don't think that's the annual.
Can you table this until Tom Harris is there?
No, we could probably get you an answer.
I could have Tom give you a call, and I give you a copy of the resolution. It's 22, yeah, it's 20-
The resolutions don't have-
It does. It has the email.
Yeah, so we went out to bid, okay. We received, this is awarding them a $324,000 contract. And this is based on a bid that we put together, which was a requirement from the NJ EBA.
That was an overall. We got a $1.5 million grant and additional $128,000 specifically for flood mitigation on Main Street. So really, it's a grant.
Okay. So that, this has been going on for years. Back when they built 21, moved 21, that was supposed to solve the flooding problems down there, which they left out of the picture, the drains, the man, drains that go into the river, to the streets, it backs up through there. Well, the water between there and then where the bridge is. So I can't, all the studies that they had on this over these years, I can't see this accomplishing anything that they haven't reviewed before. So we're gonna have Tom Harris here before you pass this?
No, I don't think so. No, but if you want Tom to give you a call tomorrow, I'd be more, I'm sure he'd be more than happy.
No, it's a waste of time. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Frant Anton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and welcome, Mr. Cabrera. I welcomed you at the last meeting once again.
Senator Tony, may I have your address, please?
129 Mount Prospect Avenue in Belleville. I just got one request for you, Mr. Cabrera. Can we go back to the format of our former agendas? These are letters, and they're very close together. Some of us like to take notes as we're reading it, but it's too tight. Our former agenda, please look at it. Thank you.
We're not big on change here, Mr. Cabrera.
The, I got an email, or whatever you call it, about the police gonna enforce double parking on Washington Avenue. I have no problem with that. The problem is with this council, you basically created that problem. You increased the density immensely on Washington Avenue, you know, changed the zoning and all that. Where do people park? You want all these businesses come in, there's no parking. You don't require parking or anything and all that. I don't know if you're aware of it. Some of you here, I don't know if you see Walgreens across the street. They get a tractor trailer. He's here for 30, 45 minutes. Where is he supposed to park? We've got all these restaurants. Now you have Uber Eats. They gotta pick up from all these restaurants right next to my business. It's 100 times a day, there's Uber Eats picking up. We've got FedEx, UPS, everybody's buying online yet. This is not new. I brought this up at planning board when some of these projects came up at planning board, a zoning board means. I've made mention to these so-called experts, oh, they're not gonna be extra trapped, millennials don't have cars, and all that baloney. So the increase in this density, and what you do, all these five, six, and now seven story monsters on Washington Avenue is created by you council members.
Mr. Frant Antoni, which project currently standing up, residential project, five, six stories, has led to this?
It's all the little ones, Mayor, that are combined. It's gonna get really bad.
We shouldn't.
It's going to get really bad, like Montclair is up in arms. Here's a Montclair resident concerned about density. You can't move in Montclair. A friend of mine called me last week to look at some Montclair meeting, township meeting, which I did. The people up there are up in arms. And I told you, my daughter lives in Roseland. 10 years ago, it was a 15 minute ride up there. It's now 45 minutes to an hour. You can't traverse Bloomfield Avenue in Montclair and Bloomfield with all the density. The same thing has already happened here, because I told you, Belleville Avenue is the route for all the Bloomfield and Montclair people to get to New York. Our town is inundated before your super developments are even built yet. It's going to get dramatically worse. So this thing about the police department that has to, and I don't know where these people are supposed to go. I'm telling you things that exist that, the new life, all this online buying, all this Uber Eats, all this delivery, maybe next meeting, you can come up and answer, have a solution and answer. The other thing is, they, what's going on with our recycling? We put out a recycling, it don't get picked up for two days, and then they pick it up in the same truck with the garbage. So why are we rinsing our bottles, taking care of our cardboard, and separating all this stuff to have it go to the landfill? Where is the recycling going, and are we getting paid for it?
It's a question for the town manager. So there's no, there's no revenue coming from cardboard or commingue. That, that was years in the past. Very few towns still have very, very clean cardboard. That's the only thing that actually did pay. So Bevel has not received any kind of revenue source on recyclables. Recyclable is a, okay, so we're required to do it now. You shouldn't have to wait two days if they miss, and you shouldn't wait two days to notify us. So if your recycling is due, let's just say on Thursday, and Friday morning it's still there, that's the time you need to call us, because they, sometimes they do do a, what they do is an extra load, and they don't get done in town until 6, 7 o'clock at night. So if they miss a stop, you gotta let us know, because they are responsible to come back. But you can't leave it out there for three days, because that would defeat the purpose. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Okay. I don't know if your secretary has told you. Me and my wife have called your office, asking, is the recycling on big, on at least three occasions recently, right, we've called your office. Leave it out there, they're gonna pick up tomorrow. And they do. They pick it up with the regular garbage, and it goes in the garbage. Now, there is, I recycle everything. I take my junk, Allied or United, right off 21 here. I just talked, two weeks ago, I brought some stuff there. They're paying $95 a ton for cardboard. Now, when I was in office, I'll bring you the circular, I had three roots, three Saturdays, all the businesses were required to flatten and tie their cardboard. We picked it up, and we made money on it. I'll bring you that, all the thing that we did on there.
Thank you, Mr. Frant.
They're paying money. So instead of paying, this is going in the garbage.
If you find, if you find somebody that will take Bevel's cardboard or paper, I would be more than happy to call them.
Allied Recycling in Wallington.
I will call them tomorrow.
Tomorrow, if you want, I have the phone number. I'll give the, right after the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Frant Antoni.
Just two weeks ago, I asked them when I brought my junk there. $95 a ton. Thank you.
Anybody else for public commenting? Mr. Droz?
It's usual to have my own timer here. Dr. 95 Bell Street. In regards to the sports programs, just to touch on something. I know you were talking about some children may not be able to pay a minimal fee. Maybe, I know I would be willing to help out and sponsor a kid or two myself, and I'm sure there's other service organizations within the town that would probably want to also pay that fee. Hopefully, the kids do play. I wouldn't want to see any kids left out on that. So that's something maybe you want to put in your ordinance that, you know-
It was actually mentioned three times today.
Well, that don't mean I hear you all the time.
No, I'm just saying, we mentioned that. Thank you for volunteering for that.
But I'm, but I'm offering to volunteer here.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, just one question. We talked about the Mr. Cabrera's hiring. How, where was the, I can't seem to find where it was advertised. And how many applicants did you have?
So I don't do the advertising, but Mr. Iacono does.
It was advertised in the NJ MMAS, the New Jersey Municipal-
Okay, because I was looking in the papers, that's why.
Yes.
How many applications did you get?
Four, maybe.
Four?
Statewide.
Statewide, good. And I, and I know, Mr. Melham, I believe you know Mr. Cabrera from your business in Gutttenburg, because I believe you do the website in Gutttenburg and West New York also.
And 28 other municipalities.
Yeah, and I know that, but I'm talking about two right now. I don't care about the others.
I've mentioned that three times. We go back a long time.
All right.
That's how I knew he was good.
This agenda is, how are we supposed to understand what is listed here? You have eighth, two, except for one letter Z, because the iCompass, you can't get it online to read these resolutions individually. So how am I supposed to know what it means?
Same way you've always known what it means.
No, no, all right, the same way. Then I'm gonna have to ask you, and you're gonna have to answer me, correct?
Right. So eventually, we're gonna, Mr. Cabrera's already hit the ground running. We're gonna hopefully have a different software other than iCompass, and you'll be able to see everything online on Friday when it's posted.
But you know, what I'm, what I'm getting to is, we have Jackie here, who's been here several years, and every time Kelly was out, she managed to put everything on the iCompass, and we were able to read it online. So I don't know why it should be different today.
Well, it is Mr. Cabrera's first meeting, so how about we-
I know, but that's why you have a deputy clerk to help fill in the blanks while the regular clerk-
We're phasing out that software.
He could have helped him out. She's capable of doing it.
We're phasing out that software, and the person controls the office.
Anyway, I know your answer anyway, but let's put it this way. You can explain to me. I'm gonna wait for an explanation for Resolution B, C, D, E, G, I, and give me the cost on K, L, M, N, O, P, T, V, W, X, Y. You can give me an explanation on that.
I don't have them.
Because I can't read them online.
Mr. Manager, do you have any explanations on them real quick? This is just public commenting, just so you know. So if you pick something out, Mr. Manager, you want to answer?
I'd be more than happy to send you an email tomorrow morning.
Yeah, well, yes. I can count on that?
Yeah.
You're gonna send me all the resolutions that I just requested?
Absolutely.
All right. We're gonna find out.
We're gonna find out.
Anthony, before a resolution's passed, you don't have to send it to anybody, because it's not a resolution until it's passed.
Tomorrow morning.
Once they're passed, you can send them to them. Before they're passed, you do not have to send them to them. You're not required to post them anywhere, nor are you required to post a resolution anywhere prior to it's being passed.
Thank you. Anybody else for public commenting?
Good evening, Carmella Fleishman, 833 Main Street. Through the chair to Mr. Martino. Strange question. If the resolutions were able to be seen online prior, why can't he send us, or send any person of the general public who's asking them before they're passed? That's kind of, you know, once it's passed, it's passed. If we don't have the opportunity to, you know, read the resolutions like we were prior, and again, I have not gone on red resolutions in the past, maybe that's what I should be starting to do now. If, again, not to sound bitchy, but if you guys are, change the software and making all these great changes- not to sound bitchy, but if you guys change the software and making all these great changes, if these changes are going to be made that we don't have an opportunity to read them prior, and, you know, express any concerns about it, what's the point of putting a resolutions up? Because if you're going to pass them without anybody reading them first, what is the point? That is my first question. Second question, with the program, with the athletic program, has anyone looked into contacting the NFL or any, you know, sports organization about grants? Because as they were, the gentleman were talking earlier, I looked up online, like there's a $15,000 grant available.
We've gotten grants. We've gotten $5,000, $10,000.
Okay, I kind of figured you guys did the grants, but I wasn't sure if everyone is aware of it. Again, new year, want to make everybody aware of everything. So can somebody answer me the question about the resolutions?
Well, we were actually told by the former clerk that the public did not have access to those resolutions, so I don't know how you all got access. The only people I know that got access is apparently Michael Sheldon, and now we know Mario. So I don't know how that was being done, because it shouldn't have been. There is, just so you know, under the Open Public Meetings Act, there is no requirement that the attachments to agenda, that the attachments to the agenda are made public, because they're not, they're drafts of documents. Even if you, even if you Oprah'd them, you wouldn't get them, because they're drafted documents. They're not documents until they're passed.
It's not a resolution until it's...
It's not a resolution until it's passed. That's why the titles of the resolutions are required, so you, so the public knows what council's considering.
Right, considering.
How does that work for the Board of Education?
No, I, so, can't talk about, I forgot the Board of Education, but...
They have board docs.
No, they don't. They have iCompass now. That's where we went with this. But I believe, Mr. Martino's right, because if you go out to the website as we speak, and you go look at the agenda, there are no resolutions, and they were never there. And that's what the public always saw. So...
Okay, but my point is, once a resolution is passed, the deal is done. There is no recourse to say, as an example, say, you know, mayor and council says, decides to, okay, make a resolution to pay $10,000 to every council member per meeting, whatever.
That's going to be in the title. The title is what's seen.
Okay, but my point is, once the title is seen, it's like reading a headline. It's not getting the full story. You know, my dad used to say, oh, don't read the headlines, read the full story. I want to read the full story. Is there a way, before the resolutions are passed into law, is there a way for the general public to see them?
I don't believe they can.
My question is, why not?
We're not the only government, the Board of Education, can the public see the content of the, ahead of time? No.
Mr. Hitten asked a question, and it was answered, because he had, the title wasn't enough. So he came up here, and he asked a question, and the council chose to answer it.
No, no, I heard, I heard what she said.
But no, the answer to your question is no.
Okay, but my question is, why isn't that public knowledge? And again, if the, if once the resolution is passed into law, what is the point of getting the resolution information, Oprah, whatever? What is the point of doing it once it's already passed?
Because the council's the one that asks questions and decides whether or not to pass a resolution, not the public. So the, it is not, it's a draft document. It doesn't become a, there's plenty of times here where things are not passed, okay? Because the mayor and council, and they don't have enough votes to pass it. They disagree with it. One happened last week, last meeting. So they aren't...
Nor is the resolution law. So the ordinances are law, there's public hearing on them.
You get to see the ordinances on second reading.
Okay, public hearing, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I do need you to wrap up, though, but that's a law. That's different than a resolution.
No, no. She's asking some good questions, so it's nice to clarify.
Right. Like I said, so, real quick, I know I'm out of time, but really quick, before it is passed into law, with the second reading...
In ordinance, you mean.
In ordinance, okay. At that point, are we allowed to see it before you vote on it?
You're allowed, absolutely. It's advertised. That's the purpose of it. It's advertised twice. So it's advertised before, the ordinances are different than resolutions, like the mayor said.
Okay.
They are legislation. The order is, an ordinance is legislation. The resolutions are actions by the mayor and council, and they decide what...
Okay, like I said, maybe, maybe I needed some clarification on that. All right, so where can we get the ordinances?
They're published. They're on the agenda, and I believe they post them, Jackie, are they posted publicly here?
They're in the newspaper as well.
No, I'm talking about the ordinances in between. You could also ask for it.
Okay, but are they online also on the...
No. No.
Okay, that's something we got to work on. Thank you.
The adopted ones, but in between first and second reading, they, they're published
in the newspaper.
Yes.
And if they, if somebody wants to see it here, they could see it.
They could come and they could request it.
Yep. Anybody else for public commenting? No, entertaining motion to close public commenting.
Second.
Motion made in second to close public hearing. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli, Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Just want to make sure. I know we forgot to ask for the, is there any public on the phone? No, okay. Okay, so we're done with public commenting. Next, next topic is the resolutions. Anybody, I don't have anything to pull off, actually.
No.
No?
All good.
Okay, hasn't happened in a while, so it's a...
Make a motion for the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion made in second to call the consent agenda as a whole. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli, Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Next on the agenda is new business. Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second.
A motion made in second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned.